Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Art Whitman. I would like to call this meeting the Shasberry Select Board to Order on Monday, November 21st, 2022, at 6:34 PM. The first thing I'd like to do is there is a change to the agenda. After the DPW report, we will be talking about a replacement phone system for COVID. So with that, does anybody have a conflict interest or anything on the agenda?
No.
No.
We don't have any minutes for this one. We have lots of warrants. Probably start with, I'll take it from the top, I guess. This one is for taxes overpaid.
Yeah, that's refunds to, the vast majority of them are people who filed their declarations late and paid the original tax bill so they got a refund coming to them.
And it comes from us or something?
Yeah, because the overpayment came to us.
Okay, very good. This is check warrant number 15 for a total of $14,990.71.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. The next warrant is check warrant number 14 for a total of $50,579.86.
So moved.
Moved by Tony. Second by Joe. Items over $1,000. DeCross and DeShield of Vermont for $8,904. Dufresne's Group for $1,700. Again, for $3,400.
Those two are for the sidewalk. The sidewalk study that's going on.
The engineering?
Yeah, then the third one is for the North Benton County.
Joseph Pomerat, or no, John Williamson. Must be for Straff, ours, pay $1,520. Okay. Yes, for Mulch, hey, for one. M&amp;T Bank. Wilmington Trust, $10,943.
Those are our water bonds.
Sycamore Land Scapeing, $2,625. Willenford Crush Stone for $2,448. And that's it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. The next one is for the town to pay the water bill to the water department for this building and for the firehouse for $334.08.
So moved.
So moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. And the last two are payroll warrants. Payroll warrant number nine for $26,002.1.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. And the last one is payroll warrant number 10 for $25,702.38.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0. Next is announcements.
So I have an announcement.
Yes, absolutely.
The town of Shasberry and the North Shaft Lions are putting on a festering of the Polar Express. It will be December 4th. It's a Sunday at 4:30 to 5:30 at the Shasberry Elementary School Library, so all are welcome to attend.
We've historically had a tree lighting ceremony until COVID came and...
Well, that tree is slightly sad at the moment.
Sad-looking tree, so we're gonna try this. So I think it's exciting. Santa Claus, everything.
Yep.
Yep.
It will be a fun night.
Any other announcements? Anybody else have any? Public comments?
Yep. I've got one unless somebody else here is itching to go. No?
Go ahead, Dave, and we'll entertain anybody on the talk.
Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. I already spoke to Dave about this, but I wanted to let the select board know too about a conversation I had with, I'm not sure it was a Shasberry resident or constituent of mine, but somebody who spoke to me on the street, essentially. The morning after elections two weeks ago, I was standing out at the corner here, just thanking people for their support, and a driver came up Church Street to the intersection, stopped right at the sign, and rolled down his window and called me over and asked whether, I think he thought, "This is my lucky day," because he said, "This is a terrible intersection you can't see coming up to this corner when there is a car or more than one car or other vehicles parked on the shoulder," they feel like. So could I do something about it? And I told him that I would certainly look into it, follow up. And my understanding, and I think Dave can fill in any details that I miss or get wrong, is that it's state highway, obviously, Route 7A there, and the state has to approve any sort of no parking zone if there were to be one. But the town has to request it first, and it can't come from me, or I guess it has, it could come from, it could come from the select board, essentially, or through Dave.
Is this across from the Harrington Store, the old laundromat slash Greek revival house?
Yes, right, so just, to be, to be clear, right, it's the northwest corner.
Okay.
And the driver was coming from, coming up Church Street, got to the corner where I was standing, and said, as you can see, and I could see, from his perspective, it was difficult to see without really inching forward, perhaps too much forward into the lane of traffic, so.
People have quietly complained about that for a long time, including myself.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not surprised, and I would say that I've certainly driven through that intersection many times, but not necessarily that hour of the day when there's a lot of traffic. And this is, so what hour? It was fairly early, but it was, so before 8:00. There was school traffic, there were folks who, parents who dropped off their kids who were coming out, just adding to the confusion, the potential for something to go wrong.
So the people that live in the apartment building park their cars there, and that's where your vision's blocked. You can't see, you have to actually go out into the intersection to see if anything's coming, which is, I'm surprised there hasn't been an accident up to now.
Yeah. So that's my, that is my comment, and I'll let the board do with that as it was, but just wanted to let you all know that I heard that.
So it has to be done through the town first before the state can regulate it?
There's a process, yeah.
I think we should follow that.
Well, yes. I think we'll put it on the agenda for December 5th.
Yeah, let me pick up when we change the parking in front of the country store on the other corner. It's more and more or less just forms, and a specialized request from the select board. Ask the State Traffic Safety Committee, I think it's called, and they have to approve it. But, you know, the state's right-of-way is quite large, and that's actually a bus stop. It's a designated bus stop, too, so, yeah, I'll just start making inquiries and see what processes.
I think we should check with Mr. Cross, just tell him Peter Cross owns the building or...
Yeah, yeah. I've actually spoken with Peter about it.
Okay.
Yeah, he knows the situation.
Okay, good.
Then we have, there's no parking on the southeast.
On the southeast, there's no parking back. That's one of the ones we changed.
Right, that's what I thought, we had changed that.
We put it 50 feet on the same side going north.
Okay, yeah.
There's always been no parking in front of the garage.
Right.
So this is the last corner, and when that, especially when that one vehicle, and since I'm using my son's much smaller car, I have to say, "Oh," I'm staring at it, and you have to stick your front end out into the road. So the only way to do it is, we'll make it no parking back to 50, or might even be 75 feet there because of the angle. But the state will do that, we need an 111 permit and all this, so. But I'll start, I'll plot the whole file and see how we did it last time.
Yeah, how we did it, yeah.
We'll report it back at the next meeting, we'll get it done.
Look, the question too is, where do the people park, the residents of the...
It's not the same, there's a spot on the side for them.
Oh, there is?
Yeah.
There is a spot on the side. I looked at it today.
Yeah, yeah, so.
How many cars can, how many, what's out front?
I don't know how many cars belong to that building, but I know, I saw three cars on the side, and it looked to me like there was room for two more.
Okay, so I'll start looking into that. Anyone on Zoom with a public comment? Yes, Librider?
Yes, thank you. I'm bringing up a traffic concern as well. At the October 3rd Select Board meeting, I, representing the residents of Cold Spring Road, talked about the desire of the Republicans to promote this speed limit to 5 miles per hour. And at that meeting, Dave asked me to send to him the names of the people that were endorsing that petition, and I actually contacted them all that night, and it was adamantly unanimous, with the exception of Art, because I asked Art at the meeting, and he declined to give an opinion at that time. And David was going to look into it, and we all received an email from David today saying that the state had looked into it, and he got a report from the state. He had just gotten that report, and that he would report out on the state's findings at Select Board meeting in December. Meanwhile, another young family has bought the house right across the road from me. I met them two weeks ago. We were all standing in front of the house, talking, and a car went absolutely whipping down Cold Spring Road, actually between us, because I was on one side and she was on the other. And she looked at me and she said, "Speeding is a real problem on this road, isn't it?" And I said, "Yes, it is, but we're working on it." And it just made me really sad that this was her introduction to Cold Spring Road. And they have two small children, two and four years old, they'll be moving in within a month. So we're waiting to hear David report, which is actually step one. Step two, then, would be trying to get the sheriff's department out here to patrol more. So I, we had that conversation as well, and I wondered how you have made out talking to the sheriff's department.
I'll let Dave handle that, because Dave has talked to the sheriff.
Yeah, I've asked the sheriff to target those areas and not to issue warnings, but to issue summonses. I get their reports on a monthly basis, so I'm waiting to see how that worked out this month also. The problem is that we're going to try and address in the next budget is, we don't really have any booked hours, so we're looking to really increase that, because the bottom line to control speed is enforcement, and we're gonna work hard on that.
Exactly. I'm sorry, David, I'm having a little trouble hearing you, but I understand that we had a contract with the sheriff's department, and thankfully, I heard also that they don't get paid unless they patrol, basically. But we would really like them to be patrolling more than they are. I guess they're not coming close to fulfilling the contract.
Well, yes, some of that's true.
Yeah, they are a few hours short every month on the contract, that's a staffing issue with them, but we are looking into really increasing our law enforcement contract, whether that's with the state police or the sheriff, is to be decided in discussions with the new sheriff and the state police if need be. Because we do need more, I mean, that's really the answer. We can make it 25, but we need someone to be out there. Right now, it's like 10 hours a week.
Right, the argument on Cold Spring Road this whole time was, you know, that lowering the speed limit to 25 was step one, but certainly step two was then, of course, finding a way to enforce it.
Yes.
Is there anything that the residents of Cold Spring Road could be doing in terms of supporting this?
No. In fact, this topic came up in North Benton once, and somebody said they were going to buy a radar gun and publish license plates of people who speeded, and that was totally not acceptable. You don't, the citizens, don't get involved in this, please. So...
We have never considered that option.
Okay. That's good.
I'm pretty sure you have that.
No. So, but the study was done, there was a box on the road for one week, right?
Yeah, I think it was one week. I've just gotten it, I haven't read it, so I don't really need to go into it, yeah.
Again, this is all done by the state?
No, this is done, just, yeah, let me clarify that. This is done through the Benton County Regional Commission. They're the ones that we contract with to do the study. So it's not, it's not the state.
Okay.
Just to be clear, doesn't make any difference, but.
Okay. So we're working on the sheriff, and we will be analyzing the study done by the Regional Commission, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, you have a question?
I think, I think.
Yeah.
I hadn't planned on making this, but I wanted to make comments to the board and to the road and crews. I live in a part, a section of Hidden Valley Road that is dirt, and this year, we did not have any washboarding that I can speak of, and which was great, and also, I could probably count on two fingers the number of potholes we had during the course of the year. So I don't know what was done, but whatever it was, thank you. I'm always gonna speak through my area of the Hidden Valley Road, I'm not gonna speak to the whole, to the whole thing, but people wanna hear that.
There is no doubt that the roads have improved dramatically. It's a lot of things. We have a young, educated or energetic and highly educated, he actually went to school, an engineering school, to be a road foreman type of thing. We've changed our source in some of our materials. We put rollers on some of the material, on some of the equipment to pack it down. It's a, it's a lot, and it's paying off, to the point that we have speed.
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
So, but thank you, it's much appreciated, okay? Does there anybody else? Yes?
Art, or Dave, I don't know who I'm asking, but I had sent my application in for the Economic Development Committee. I'm just wondering, are you making a decision this evening, or are you still waiting for resumes and applications to couple?
I think that we are still waiting on applications to come in, because I know that several Fugil have expressed interest, and so we're just waiting kind of to get the whole group of them, and then we'll discuss.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? George's report, no, Amy?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
We never really talked about October, so I just wanted to tie a bow on that if we've got the reports.
They disappeared on me.
They disappeared.
Oh, your reports always disappear on me.
I mean, October, as you have, you may remember, was all about taxes.
Yeah.
And all about the change of my bank from Peoples to the new one. So that's why I wasn't here, I was kind of, kind of crazed, but everything's going well.
No, my link went down, so we're not gonna get it.
Oh, you don't have it?
No, my link went down.
Oh, the link?
So I have to reset the whole thing, which means I have to shut this meeting off.
Okay, well, I mean, what you're gonna see is that I collected a lot of tax money, and let's see, there was a grant that came in, in the reserve account for Class 3 Rose, that's to replenish that. That fund has been with a negative balance within the reserve fund for a while, and I think Dave said there's another piece of that funding coming through. Let's see, I think that was in October. The other thing is the water bills are out there right now. If you haven't gotten yours, please let me know or Josh, because there have been some returned ones, so you gotta pay it even if you don't receive it. So give me a call, and I'll get you a copy of that bill if you didn't receive it. We've had several that were not delivered. I'm putting together the delinquent tax packet for MRT. The final numbers are that it's almost identical to last year. You know, we, every year, we come up with new ways for people to pay, but it seems to be a pretty steady number that goes delinquent every year. So I'm gonna get that to him tomorrow, so people who were not able to pay on time should be expecting to hear from MRT in the coming weeks. I, let's see, there's something else I want to, oh, yeah, I wanted to, maybe, I think there's some stuff about what's defined as late that I want to talk with MRT first, but then I want to talk to you guys about having an actual policy. Specifically, if somebody sends me a check, gets it to me on time, and makes, so makes a good faith effort to pay, but has a problem with the check, like the two numbers don't agree, or, which, see, things have been happening a lot lately, they, people don't write the same number in both places. My feeling is that they try to pay on time, that's an on-time check, but I need to talk about that with MRT, and I'm gonna write these things down and for a policy to adopt, so there's no gray area about things like that. So that's a sort of a warning of something coming. Still don't have them?
No, the link to the server is down. Yours, next time, I'll make sure I PDF them.
Okay.
Because I can bring up PDFs, but yours is a link to the server, and the link went down for some reason, which means I have to shut this off and reboot and lose the whole year.
Okay, it's fine. I mean, this is, this is one of these in-between meetings when I don't project it to the budget anyway. I did take a look at it. The spending is almost identical to last year. I think we're running about 2% ahead of where we were at this point last year, and the revenues are obviously looking like final now, because we are just getting through tax season. And I told you about the grant and the water money, I think that's all that's going on in the reserve accounts, so there's not much to see anyway. Any questions about any of that?
Somebody tried to pay you with a postdated check then, huh?
No, no, buddy.
That would be one of those things. That would have to be in our policy, wouldn't it?
Yeah, you know, part, one of the problems that people have had, and this is kind of, I mean, like, it's my fault, I guess, is that I process checks so fast that sometimes people think, "I'll take a couple days to transfer the money," and I've got a check reading machine on my desk, sometimes I'm processing those things as you're leaving my office. And I feel kind of bad about that. People aren't used to having things be instantaneous when they pay, but that's kind of on me, but it's much easier to stay on top of it.
It is not on you, no.
Well, but anyway, I mean, there were a couple of people who just had checks returned because I was too fast processing. Anyway, I do want to establish policies for this, because I know that we've been operating with just goodwill on both our sides between MRT and me, but it really should be more clear.
I agree. So you'll come back with this recommendation?
Yeah, yeah, I want to, I want to talk to you about it, and I think maybe the next meeting I can get some things written, writing. Oh, we did get the, I don't know whether Dave was gonna talk about this, but we've gotten the report from the auditors, and we've written our responses to them, to their quibbles about inventory, again, the usual thing. It's some of the greatest.
Kind of the same things they recommend every year, and then tell us that, well, even if you do all this, like change from a cash basis, that it won't make us guys be compliant anyway.
Yeah.
So it's a huge amount of work to not achieve what they're saying anyway. So we get kind of, they're required to put these four things in. Every year they're in, every year they say, "We understand that you can't really achieve this," so it's kind of interesting. Every year they're in, every year they say, we understand that you can't really achieve this, so it's kind of interesting. The numbers are all good, which is what I'm more interested in. Uh, that will all be in the town report as it is every year.
So, that's, that's all I got.
Questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much. You deserve a vacation after taxes.
Except it's water season.
For the last couple of months, we have been announcing that we need volunteers to step forward with the Planning Commission and the DRB, and they did. Thank you very much, people. So, we have some candidates. These people have been, um, interviewed by the, by their, um, by the committees, by the DRB and the Planning Commission, whichever one they are, um, wanting to join, and so we have to accept their appointments if we so choose, and that makes it official, I think is the right word.
Yeah, and just to point out, we have Mike Day from the DRB, any questions? And I'm sure Martha can answer any questions regarding Nancy Burns in the PC.
Okay. So we'll take them one at a time. The Planning Commission has recommended Nancy Burns.
So moved.
Yeah, we have to, yeah, we have to make a motion first, and then discussion afterwards. So Martha makes, make the motion.
I'll second.
Joel, that's a second, but Joel, uh, open for discussion? Okay, no further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, five zero zero. I think we're gonna finally get a full DRB, if all these are approved. Is that right? Is that what the alternates do?
There's, uh, no. We are, we have, we would have, with three members to be appointed at this meeting, we would then be at our full, uh, level of five, but there is also provision for two alternates, which are unfilled at this point.
Great. So, um, the DRB has recommended Zoe Contros Carroll to be appointed.
So moved.
Moved by Martha.
Second.
Second by Mike. Discussion?
I can decide, I did interview her, and she does have some background and some knowledge about, uh, development and historical preservation, and does work with some law offices as well, so she kinda knows the lingo, and I think she'll be a good member.
Thank you, Mike, for doing that.
Yep.
Okay. No further discussion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, five zero zero. Next is Sarah Costin.
So moved.
Moved by Martha.
Second.
Second by Mike. Discussion?
I did not interview her personally.
If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, five zero zero. And the last is James Bro, who was actually sitting with us. He was, uh, let's do a motion first, and then we'll have a discussion.
So moved.
Moved by Mike.
Second.
Second by, uh, by Joe. He was on the DRB how many years ago?
Five, ten, fifteen?
And then he moved out of town, and is retired since then, has come back to town, so, um, he's, he knows the roads, so.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ward, and also thanks. I didn't get a chance to see most of the, we had two of them, uh, attend our last meeting last week. I had to be out of town, so we had internet connection issues, so my face wasn't terribly visible, but we did conduct our business via phone, and, uh, so we look forward to bringing everybody on board and up this week. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to them.
I was concerned for a while, but the citizens came through. Thank you, Ward. Yep. Next on the agenda, uh, as was brought to the public's attention last meeting, that we have entered into a contract with intent to buy the two-point, what are four acres or so that's right behind Cole Hall that is owned by Peter Cross, Cross Apartments LLC, and, um, this is done with ARPA money, which both, um, our council and the League of Cities and Towns told us can be done without complete voter approval, which is what you'd have to do if you bought it with taxpayer money. But we are bringing it before the people, because this is a significant purchase, and it's, uh, when we started receiving some of the preliminary reports from the, um, ARPA committee that did an excellent job, it was very apparent that they wanted something here around Cole Hall. They wanted a, either a community center, or a park, or something, and we couldn't do it unless we had that, so we at least entered into a contract that, uh, and we will be talking about this once more, a week from today.
The next meeting.
Next meeting, which is a week from today, on the twenty-eighth?
Two weeks from today. Two weeks.
No, next, next week. Next week is the twenty-eighth. We have three meetings successively the next Mondays.
We got it?
Yep.
Our meeting is the, yeah, we have two public meetings.
Today's the twenty-first, so next Monday's the twenty-eighth. That's when we got it.
No, we have two select board meetings, not two consecutive Mondays.
So we had gone through our thing, and you had sent us a meeting so that we would have two public hearings. One of them would be today, one of them would be...
Oh, did I? Okay.
Yeah, the twenty-eighth.
I don't remember, I don't know why I said that.
Yep, and then the last one would be...
Oh, that's why, because the closing date's the first.
Because our closing date is, is close, and so we needed to...
That's not the, that's not the purchase date, that's the date that we have to...
That's the date we have to agree by, yeah, right, sorry.
We have to agree with it.
Okay.
So it'll be one week from today?
Yeah, one week from today, we'll make it six thirty.
One more meeting?
Correct.
So, so public can appear then, or?
Yeah, yeah, it's a public meeting, we'll have it on Zoom. And just a correction, the property's owned by eighty-three Buck Hill Road LLC, not, not by the other people.
Any comments on Zoom or here? 'Cause that's why we brought it up. Okay, thank you. Propose by law change? This is just to tell...
You skipped one.
What did I skip?
Skip the...
Ten.
I'm sorry, I did. ARPA funds Economic Development Committee and Cole Hall Committee. We basically think there should be two committees that have got some very busy agendas on it.
Yes, um, so I think, based on our, um, ARPA survey and discussions with the public, that there are kind of two big, um, things that are facing our town. One of them includes, um, the potential purchase of eighty-three Buck Hill Road, and, and kind of what that space will look at as a public space, and the other is many improvements that we've talked about already with Cole Hall, with making it more accessible and things like that. So we're asking for folks that are interested to provide a resume and a letter of interest to David Kiranen, and then we'll also be gathering some of our own, um, members from municipal government, like our town clerk and, and, uh, folks from the DRB and Planning Commission as well to kind of round out these, um, committees, so that we can kind of move forward with coming up with a timeframe, next steps, and working with planners on both of those, because they're going to be very extensive projects.
Okay, and we'll probably, certainly after the first year, we'll probably be looking for a report on probably from, at every select, select meeting.
Even an update from both committees.
Yeah, that's right, just, this is something that isn't just gonna...
Right, and I, I don't know if we had set a date yet, David, for kind of, now that we're starting to get folks, um, interested in resumes, if there's gonna be a cutoff, so that then we can either interview, or, um, or decide, and then, and kind of move forward?
Yeah, and the structure, I, I sent out a thing about the structure, proposed structure form. I don't know if you'd wanna get into that, I can bring that up if you want, uh...
I think that it's worth doing. We, um, because there are so many, um, big, um, and lengthy conversations that are going to happen, we, we, like I said, um, are thinking about having two different committees that are kind of working in tandem with each other, and several members would be moving between, um, between the boards, so that we kind of keep a continuity of, of the whole kind of re-envisioning of our downtown space, but, um, and, and the Economic Development Committee would be kind of a longstanding, um, committee that would continue, whereas the Cole Hall one would be kind of more limited, although it's, it's going to be a long, a long committee as well.
It's gonna be a big project, but, but all the committees, the subcommittees from the EDC would be, have a termination date. The EDC hopefully will continue on, and there's gonna be many more things to keep an eye on. But, uh, we, I just thought this together to try and think of, we need some structure for these committees. Uh, and like the Cole Hall Planning Committee will really be limited to the footprint of this building, because everything out here has a lot of discussion to go on with it, and what's actually eventually gonna be turned into, and that's all the Economic Development Committee where that goes. And, uh, here, uh, just for members of Cole Hall, uh, a select board member, I think we talked about the EDC member, we'll just coordinate without members having to be on two committees. That does seem a little overwhelming. Uh, myself, Marlene, because most of the things we're talking about, rebuilding downstairs, would be the clerk's office, uh, community members, or two community members, and, uh, then we would look for our consultant. And on the Economic Development Committee, if this table works for you, uh, we'll get people in there. We want some representation from the different committees, and I guess out here is gonna dovetail into recreation somehow.
Yes, so we're hoping that one of our recreation committee members will join us on that committee to, um, to discuss. But I suspect we're probably in the next few weeks going to kind of firm up what is going to happen with the committee, and then we will, um, be able to kind of make, um, appointments.
Yeah, so definitely interested parties get in touch so that we can start getting this together. For Cole Hall, it's important to get this going, because we're kind of a linchpin on how much this is gonna cost, and then we can look at everything else out there. And we still have a million and twenty-five thousand to go, so there's opportunities on the table, so. The quicker we get moving, in today's atmosphere, the quicker we're gonna save some money, too. So I thought that we're in a rush. We still have till the end of twenty-four to decide what to do. But Cole Hall is pretty straightforward. The other stuff is gonna take some time to think through.
And also, if we're thinking about matching some of this money with grants, it's gonna take us a little while to, to kind of get seed money and matching funds for certain pieces of this, bulk projects.
Yeah, it's, it will even take us a month or two even to get our individual consultants lined up, once, once we have the go on it, so. Please send the letters in, if you're interested, we need to get going.
Okay, now we'll talk about the proposed certain by-law changes. Actually, at the next meeting, this is just to warn everybody that the public should come at the next meeting, because it's gonna be presented to us and to the public on the December fifth meeting.
Correct, that's the first warned meeting. The board will have an opportunity to make amendments to a changes to it if they feel it's necessary. Uh, this is really just informational, so the public knows December fifth will be the first meeting. Uh, the by-law changes are on the webpage, so you can read through them. They're not very lengthy, so, um, that way you'll be prepared for the meeting if you have any questions. Just want people to be aware that this is taking place on the fifth.
And, and December nineteenth, it looks like.
And December nineteenth. Do you have to have a schedule, too, if there's a major change?
And there, there are a lot of, um, changes to bylaws that are correcting things that are incorrect or are different in different sections of the bylaws. There's a provision about tiny homes, um, and, uh, some amending site plans, so it makes it easier for folks that are, um, changing site plans. So a kind of popery of, uh, of, of things to look at, but, um...
Somebody from the committee is gonna present.
We will be there to answer questions if needed.
Anything else on that? Thank you, Martha. DPW report?
Yeah, it's basically winter. So, you know, they actually had to go out and do some sanding and salting this morning. Did get a little icy. Those are the kind of annoying little money wasters, uh, it has to be done, and it doesn't amount to anything. Uh, other than that, they're getting ready for the winter. I must say, I don't know if I mentioned this, the last meeting, we have one of the nicest dog kennels roaming town from now. We, we built a kennel, uh, who had an occupant before we even got the last nails in, so, uh, who was after, he stayed with us for, I think, nine days. He was taken by second chance for adoption. It's really, you know, it's, it's pre-winter, it's making sure everything's ready for when the snow flies. Meanwhile, they'll continue on with, with brushing and things like that, but, uh...
Maybe you should talk about Tonner Trail?
Oh, yeah, I almost forgot. The Tonner Trail was completely rebuilt last week, uh, by the road crew. We rented some equipment to get some mini tractors in, so we could, uh, just take up the entire trail and rebuild it, cut back some of the trees that were in the way, some brush and things like that, so. Whole new surface, a whole new border. It's, uh, the first thing, we decided we could sneak that in before winter. It's, uh, the main events in Cole Hall will be taking place in the spring, but those will all be contracted out. This is just, uh, a quick project. Well, it wasn't quick, it took a full week to do it, with two rented tractors, but, uh, came out nice. It was a nice job. I was about that.
And we got any questions about the DPW? And the, now the added, um, on the agenda was the replacement of the phone system?
Yeah, this is a, a complete change into a voice-over internet protocol system, which, uh, will really, um, just, it's an amazing decrease in our rates. It'll save us a tremendous amount of money from our current carrier. What I've done, because I am not very techy, I recruited, uh, our computer people at RCS. I'm gonna have Rob Stir and Adam Brimmer, and I asked Tim Scoggins, for those at home, the former select board chair and head of the Community Union, the Communications Union District, to join us in a Zoom conversation with the techs from the company RSI, who will be providing the service, and our salesperson from CIT in Bennington. Uh, just because it sounds really good, it is really good. I don't know anybody who's had a problem with it, but, uh, it's not my wheelhouse, so I decided to bring in some people who know about it. So especially, you know, phones are honestly almost secondary here. It's the computer that we run on. So I just wanna make sure that the system we get, uh, interfaces with our servers correctly. So, which I'm assured, you know, it won't be a problem, but that's mostly from the sales side, so. Wanna make sure that the people on our side know what's going on. But, uh, with the new wiring that went in, the fiber and all that, the speeds are exceptional, and we really should have no problem whatsoever. You know, the voice is just, you're speaking, it all goes over the internet, and batches it. The person on the other end just hears it like a normal conversation. And we get the internet through the same thing. That honestly is the only thing I'm worried about, is, the internet frankly is more important to me for the computer systems than phones. Uh, but if we can get it for one at a much, much reduced cost, it'll be well worthwhile.
So this is all part of the Phidium package that we're going to be getting here?
Well, we're getting it consolidated.
Okay, which is Phidium, but it's...
Which is Phidium, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
However, that is working. And, you know, the, the company, um, uh, ESI, that's who we have our phone system from now, and what they do is they, they have a, a remote PBS... And what they do is they have a remote PBX so that when you dial in, it'll be going to that remote PBX, and I'll be redirecting it to phones here, and it'll, in a cloud, hold all kinds of messages and everything like that that we can't do here. So ours is actually, you know, I bought it like nine years ago, and tech-wise, it's kind of a dinosaur already. So this will really be quite a big improvement, and it's at very, very minimal cost.
And is there any conversation about if the internet goes down, VoIP does not work? So if there is a system in place or something to talk about?
Yeah, there is two problems, power outages at their end and power outages at our end. So for Cole Hall, and those disruptions would be, you know, well, it depends on how long it would take. On their end, it would probably be pretty quick. Or on our, on their end, it would be pretty quick. On our end, it would depend on how quick we might, we could correct the problem. But both Cole Hall and the main firehouse would have dedicated hard lines.
Okay, because we're command centers.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that we weren't completely abandoning a wire.
Yeah, yeah, no, we can't unfortunately.
Because I have definitely had issues with VoIP for the years.
Oh, yeah, and that's why I wanted to bring in people to talk about it, too, because, I mean, I wanted the hard wires, but they assure me that it's, you know, very reliable.
And when you have good internet service, it's wonderful.
Yeah.
When you're out in rural areas, it's not so wonderful.
Yeah, yeah.
Until you get fast speeds.
And I think we're pretty much, most of the town, as I understand it, is complete now. So there are some sections that will be for a while.
I'm still waiting.
Well, there's one right there.
I'm praying one of these days they're going to send me...
Oh, you know what? They haven't gotten to the firehouse on Old Depot yet, either. That one, we're going to have the hard line left at. But we do need the two hard lines because we have to function if everything goes down.
Right, okay, great.
But when we talk with them, we'll have a whole conversation. Well, I'll add it to the agenda on the 28th. We might as well have something else to talk about.
Do you need anything from us?
No, I just wanted to let you know we're having this meeting. This came up a couple weeks ago. I got this offer, and it was just...
Too good to be true.
Yeah, and like I said, I called in people who know about this stuff because, who knows? Not me, I don't know about it. So we'll be doing that next week, and I'll have something for the 28th.
Dave, is this the other business section? I didn't quite, because I had a question.
No, no, we'll come to that in a minute.
What's that?
So we are up to other business now?
Yeah, now we are, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, okay.
May I ask a quick question related to tech?
No, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Dave, you made me think of something. I don't know if this has been addressed at the meetings, and I apologize if it has and I just didn't touch it. In the banner or something recently, I saw something about Shastler received broadband money potentially? Because I know the state of Vermont received broadband money, but did the town receive money? There was an article in the banner. Did you hear anything about that? If not, I'll find it and bring it up at the next meeting.
Yeah, if you find something like that, send it to me. But Shastler did not receive any broadband money. It may be wrapped into some other fund, or it might have gone to the CUD to cover Shastler. I don't know. I'd have to see the article, I don't remember seeing that.
Okay, I'll grab it and make sure that I read it correctly, and then maybe email it to you or something.
Okay, sounds good.
Anything?
Any other business? Review of action items, what do you have, Dave, for action items?
Well, now that I've been reminded that we're having a meeting on the 28th, we'll be here on the 28th.
6:30.
6:30 on the 28th. I forgot I made up that meeting. And because we're meeting with, from the Zoom meeting next Monday, oh, well, that'll be the day after, so we won't have the phones on that. So that will be a one-topic meeting. And that's all. I'll continue with the phones, and we'll have a presentation of that on the 5th. And I think that's about it. We will be starting...
Yep, yes. Yes, go ahead.
Dave, what meeting will you be reporting out on Cole Spring Road?
I'm not sure yet, maybe the 5th.
That's the next regularly scheduled select board meeting.
Right, okay, thank you.
And the 5th, you'll get the first buggy draft, too. Let's see, I'm almost done with it.
5th is going to be a busy meeting.
5th is going to be a busy meeting. Well, I said that about this meeting, and this has sort of been up on me.
Okay, that's the only action items, so if there's no other business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
Moved by Joe.
Second.
Second by Mike. No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.